We're here in the line at 7:30, have about gotten in here now. So we have a little bit of a ceremonial to deal with first, and so I'll call on Tim Wysocki to start that off.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Better now.
Better now? Okay, so my name's Tim Wysocki. I'm the election warden here in town, and we've recently had some of our longtime election workers decide to step down, and we wanted to acknowledge them today. So would Judy Mills, Jane Sawyer, and Mary Wheeler, if you're in the house, please come up to the front? So it looks like Judy and Mary might be either stuck in the line or didn't come up today, but I'd just like to acknowledge Jane for her decades of work. She's spent many, many hours making sure that Berlin's elections, there we go, Berlin's elections came through smoothly, and we are profoundly grateful for that. So on behalf of our Senator Robin Kennedy, and we also have Meg Killcoin, I'd like to introduce Kayana.
Hello. Can everyone hear me? Awesome. Hi, everyone. My name is Kayana James. I'm the district director for Senator Robin Kennedy. As you know, Senator Kennedy and Representative Killcoin represent the town of Berlin. Unfortunately, they were unable to make it tonight, but they send the next best thing. So here I am, and I'm happy to be here. I see a few familiar faces. I'm often at 19 Carter, so Evie, Barbara, I see a few people. Without much ado, I just want to extend a heartfelt congratulations to all your years of service to this community. I'm going to read an official citation on behalf of the state. It says, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Jane Sawyer in recognition of your 24 years of dedicated service as an election clerk for the town of Berlin. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate, attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the Senate." So this is signed by, again, the President of the Senate, Karen Spilka, and Senator Robin Kennedy. So congratulations on 24 years.
Thank you very much. And as always, if anybody is interested in participating in the elections, you can either see me, or you can see Beth over here, and we'll get you signed up to help out. Thank you very much for your attention.
Okay, I'm going to start to call a meeting to order, and call your attention in the booklet, particularly to page four, which has at the top of it "Berlin Town Meeting", which has a number of comments, most particularly the safety comments. In the case of an emergency, please use the side exits of this building, and you can get everybody out very quickly if we use those. And I will also say that if you're, at the end of the meeting, or when you're leaving otherwise, you have to always go by someplace where they are collecting our voting implements, and they will be doing that at this door, and that door, and the two in the back, even during the meeting. But that's a very important thing. We need to get these back, and they cost us a lot of money. And also that we can't have people standing in the aisles because of issues that relate not to fire exist, but to fire exits. For some reason or another, the computer doesn't like the word exits in that spot. There are a few other things that are mentioned there. Many things that are mentioned on those pages that will be helpful to you to understand the meeting if you're new, and perhaps to argue with me if you've been around a while. At any rate, that's an important thing that we want to cause. Did you have any announcements to make?
Dog licenses are due, and they can do early voting Wednesday night and Thursday.
Early voting in the town election Wednesday night and Thursday this week. Wednesday night and Thursday at the town clerk's office. And dog licenses are due. I'll call on the town clerk to read the call for the meeting and the constable's return.
Worcester SS to a constable in the town of Berlin. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Berlin qualified to vote in town elections and town affairs to meet at the Berlin Memorial School Gym, 34 South Street, Berlin, Mass. on Monday, the fifth day of May, 2025, at 7:30 p.m. Then and there to act on the following articles. And you are directed to serve the warrant by posting up attested copies thereof as per vote of the town in said town 14 days at least before the time of holding said meetings. Given under our hands this third day of April, 2025, Berlin Select Board, Margaret Stone, Chairman, R. Scott Hawkins, Vice Chair. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Berlin by posting up attested copies thereof at the town hall, the town offices, and the post office at least seven days before the time of holding said election as within directed. Kevin Pond, Constable, April 7, 2025.
prior year's expenses. See if the town will vote to transfer appropriate sum of money to pay unpaid expenses. Selectman Scott Hawkins.
I move to transfer $103.20 from free cash for the payment of the following unpaid prior year's expenses. $103.20 for wiper blades and cleaning supplies bought from Amazon.
Motion is made and seconded, as you see it in your warrant booklet. Do you want to speak to it, Scott?
No.
Do you want to speak to it?
I'm fine.
You're fine.
I thought the motion was pretty self-explanatory.
Our finance committee has a printed recommendation in favor. Anything further?
No.
Anyone else have a question? If not, we've got a bill to pay. Please note it says it requires a four-fifth majority vote. I'm sorry.
I think that's a fine vote.
I'll explain that now. We're going to be able to proceed to a vote. It'll be our first vote. You have your voting device, and when I open the vote, not before, when I open the vote, you press the yes or the no as you wish to vote. It should, very shortly thereafter, show an okay, a small okay in the window, and that'll indicate that your vote was recorded in the system. Do watch for that. And then we will, we'll get the results after, after the voting seems to stop, okay? Is there a question about how to use these things? If in the process, you, if you, if while the vote is open, if you change your vote, you can change it to the other way during that time, but as soon as I close the vote, then it can't be changed anymore. That's another thing that works in the whole thing. Okay, I'm going to open the voting on this first article. The $103.20 from free cash to pay an old bill, and I'll ask you to vote now. I'll call the voting to a halt, and we'll get the results of this vote.
A lot of them are not voting.
What?
A lot of them are not going to the okay state.
[inaudible]
While we try to get the electronic thing straightened out, we're going to go back and do it the old-fashioned way a little bit here for a while. You received a card. And I'm going to ask, I'm going to take some votes that way for a minute. And I'm going to start on Article one, the one that we just were trying to vote on, $103.20 for an unpaid bill of the police department. And I'm going to, I'm going to do this backwards. All those opposed to paying said bill, please hold up your card. All those in favor of holding up said bill. The motion passes by the required four-fifth majority vote. Article two, transfer of free cash to the Conservation Open Space Fund. Peg Stone of the Select Board.
I move to transfer $50,000 from free cash to the Conservation Open Space Fund.
Motion is to transfer the $50 from free cash. It's the same motion that was in the, in your booklet. Is there, do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, I mean, this is something that we've done year over year. This is the mitigation money that we receive from Solomon, Pawn, Mall. I think this is our second to last money that we're going to get from them, so it's nothing new.
The finance committee has a positive recommendation. Anything else to be said?
No.
Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? Yes. And like we always say with everybody, tell us your name and address and so forth, so people know.
Bill Anderson, Peachill Road. So what is the free cash balance at the start of this meeting?
I don't have exact, but it's around 1.2 million.
Anyone else?
To be exact, it's 1.389 million.
Anything else to be said on the motion? If not, I'm going to ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article three, repurpose library capital funding article.
Hello, can you hear me? I'm Susan Skug, Berlin Library Trustee. And I move the town vote to transfer $14,775 from Article 20 of the May 2006 Annual Town Meeting to fund all costs associated with interior improvements at the Berlin Public Library.
I need your paper. Thank you. The motion is to transfer $14,775 from Article 21 of the May 2006 Annual Town Meeting to fund all costs associated with interior improvements to the library. Want to speak to it?
I'd like to invite Library Director Victoria Dubey to speak on it.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Victoria Dubey, Director of the Berlin Library. This is, like we said, an old town article, so it will not impact taxes this year. It is just repurposing the remaining funds. And we would like to primarily use it for improvements to the children's room of the library. Right now, our children's collection is split over two levels, which is making it difficult for families with multiple children to browse the collection at the same time. So we'll be purchasing some new shelving to get all of the collection into one spot in the library and make it easier for everybody and open up some space in the building.
Finance Committee has a positive recommendation. Anything else, anything else further there? Okay. Anyone else has something to say on this motion? I better look through my glasses or I won't be able to see the hands. Okay. If that's the case, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes by unanimous vote. Okay, Article four, the Fiscal Year 2026 Operating Budget. And we, as usual, refer to the Finance Committee. And within the booklet, we have the Finance Committee's report at the end of the booklet. And the budget itself starts on page 30 and continues on, and we will be going through all of those various parts there, in pieces. Scott? Scott, as the Chair of the Committee, do you want to comment at the beginning and make the first motion?
Go ahead. I move to raise and appropriate $1,541,625 to fund items 1 through 44 as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2026.
The motion is for $1,541,625 to cover the general government expenses, items 1 through 44. That's page 30 and the very top section on page 31 in your book. And all of those budgets are combined into this one motion. Anyone, and that's a recommendation of the Finance Committee from Mr. Schultz. Anyone want to speak on anything, anyone want to speak to this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries almost unanimously, not quite. We never used to have unanimous votes when I was young. Never. Public Safety. Mary Porter of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Are the chiefs back there, paying attention? Here we go. I move to raise and appropriate $2,630,653 to fund items 45 through 61. Transfer from the Public Safety Special Stabilization Fund, $262,000 to item 46, Police Wages Full Time and Part Time. And to appropriate from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation, $125,000 to item 49, Fire and EMS Wages Full Time and Part Time. For the sum total, $3,017,653 as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2026. I'll just say, as the Finance Committee, as we stand up and make these motions, people that are not familiar with our work, we, we meet every Wednesday night, the first quarter of the year. And different town employees, town departments come to us, talk about their budget requests. We deliberate, we look at the information. Our town accountant here answers questions, our town administrator, and we then make a recommendation to you, the voting bodies, who appropriate this money. So, yes, we've reviewed the police and fire budgets. We support them.
If you're new to town meeting, I will add that the word "raise and appropriate" means you're gonna be taxed for it. That's what "raise and appropriate" means. Raise by taxation and then put it to the uses given in the, in this motion. And the other items that are in this are other sources of money that we have in the town coffers, which we transfer in order to make the total amount that you see at the end of the column for the fiscal year 26 FinCom budget under Public Safety. Anything else to be said on this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Public Works. Cliff Laporte of the Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate $865,815 to fund items 62 through 72 and to appropriate the sum of $10,300 from Cemetery General Receipts reserved for appropriation and the sum of $1,050 from Cemetery Sale of Lots Receipts reserved for appropriation to item 72 Cemetery Expenses for the sum total, $877,165 as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2026.
Motion is made and seconded. Raise and appropriate $865,815. Appropriate $10,300 from Cemetery General Receipts reserved for appropriation and $1,050 from Cemetery Sale of Lots Receipts reserved for appropriation to item 72 Cemetery Expenses for the sum total of $877,165 as recommended by the Finance Committee. And that figure, you find at the end of that section, again, in the recommended, the fiscal year 26 budget. Does anyone else want to speak to this motion?
Hi, everyone. I'm Julie Lee, 180 South Street. I wanted to ask a question about line item 62. I was just wondering if the Finance Committee could help me understand how our highway salary has a 2% increase while our town administrator has an 8.1% increase.
I can speak to a little bit about the town administrator salary. I'd like for you to consider the following. If for some reason our town administrator left, we would go out and try to find a new one. That one would cost us about $10,000 to $15,000 from free cash that we would need to hire a firm, which has helped us in the past for our former TA, our current TA, and for other fire positions in town. So you're looking at a $15,000 increase right there. Add on to that, if anybody has checked the municipal website for the cost of a TA, you're probably looking at a starting salary of $180,000 to start. So when you look at that in totality, you need to take into consideration all the extra money that the town would have to come up with to find a new town administrator. So that is why we brought it up to as close to market value as possible for our TA. Any other further questions on that? Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Hearing no one? I'll ask you to vote on the Public Works. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Human Services. Heidi P. Todd of the Finance Committee.
Human Services, proposed motion. I move to raise and appropriate $134,438 to fund items 73 through 84 as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2026.
Motion made and seconded to raise and appropriate $134,438 to fund items 73 through 84 as recommended. Anyone want to speak on that motion? Yes, Bob Blair.
Good evening. Bob Blair, Summer Road. I rise as a citizen and taxpayer, not as a member of any of the town boards, to offer an amendment to the budget proposed under this heading. And the amendment concerns COA expenditures. And it reads, "I move to raise and appropriate $159,534 to fund items 73 through 84 by increasing line 79, Counsel on Aging Wages Part Time, from $0 to $33,798 and decreasing line 80, COA Expenses from $27,841 to $19,189."
The motion is to raise and appropriate $159,534. You're making this as a, as a substitute motion for the one that's on the floor. To amend the motion on the floor to read to these numbers. $159,534 to fund items 73 through 84 by increasing line item Counsel on Aging, line item 79, Counsel on Aging Wages Part Time, from $0 to $33,748 and decreasing line 80, COA Expenses from $27,841 to $19,189. Would you explain the intent, Bob?
Yes. Essentially, what this does is it puts into effect the proposed fiscal year 26 budget request items for 78, 79, and 80. And in doing so, refunds wages for the Counsel on Aging van driver. I have a lengthy, not lengthy, but I have a longer explanation of why that's necessary. But in light of our late start and the fact that so many people are here for other issues, if I may, I would summarize it by saying that the COA van currently is not operating. That's because we don't have a driver, and it's been extremely difficult to get a driver. In a nutshell, eliminating the salary provision for hiring a driver doesn't seem to me to be the way to go about attracting a new driver. We've tried just about everything we can think of. We welcome any creative suggestions. But it's providing transportation for seniors, mind you, seniors 60 and over represent about a third of the town's total population of 3,500. And the percentage of residents 60 and older is growing. Some think that within a short period of time, the percentage will be 40%. Being without transportation options is a serious matter for seniors. Unless they have family members or some organization that can provide them with rides, they're kind of stuck. Sometimes they can't get the medical appointments for lack of transportation. And in some cases where that is difficult, they just don't go to the medical appointments. They also skip social events where they can get together with friends and neighbors and other townsfolk. And that leads to loneliness and isolation, which can lead to depression. I think it's crucial that we have a COA, we do have a COA van, that we have funds available to hire competent drivers. Anybody here want to raise your hand? We'll take your name and address. And to have that van operating. Recently, in a deal worked out between the Worcester Regional Transit Authority, in whose area we are, and the Metro West Regional Transit Authority, they've started a new service, an on-demand service called Catch Connect, which takes people from Berlin to Hudson and some sites in Marlboro. That's great. Gets them to Marlboro Hospital. Does not take them to Clinton Hospital. Does not take them to hospitals in Worcester. Does not take them to Emerson in Concord. That's a big deal. The COA van that the town owns, if driven, can take people to any of those destinations because we don't have geographical limitations. The Worcester Regional Transit Authority does have. They can provide us a van. We already have one. We would still have to provide the driver. But by their rules, we, they cannot, their van cannot go, or their van, our van, under their service, cannot go beyond our boundary with Hudson. So goodbye Marlboro Service. Our van allows us to do it. We just need a driver. And I don't think unfunding driver salaries is the way to start off that, or to continue, I should say, that progress, process. So I would encourage you to vote for this amendment and keep us on a path to try to find a driver for our pretty nifty van, which is sitting over there lonely next to all the police vehicles.
Save it for voting. Scott Hawkins of the Select Board.
And I'm gonna speak in a moment opposing that motion, but I would like to do a clarification, helping you out. Officially, you need to put a source for the increase in funding, and so I believe it's gonna come from raise and appropriate. So I believe his motion is good to amend this, and the increased money is gonna come from raise and appropriate. He didn't source his added spending. And that's a requirement of the motion.
He did increase the raise and appropriate.
Right. And so he officially asked it to come from raise and appropriate. He didn't say where it would come from.
Oh.
And so I'm just making sure that's clear, but that's not the reason I oppose. The, the Select Board removed this line item purposely. There has not been a van driver this year. The van has not done any rides this year. And so continuing to have funding in a line that is not actively being used didn't seem to be the appropriate place to go. Instead, the Select Board decided to add $10,000 more into the expense line item for the Counsel on Aging to help the Counsel on Aging to figure out potentially other solutions to the issue of transportation for seniors in this town. Because the current process, it's been very difficult to get drivers. The way the position is currently structured is not overly appealing for anyone. And so the solution was to move some money into the expense line and to see if there are better and different ways to do this and potentially come back in future years to, to fund if there was a better way of doing it.
This motion seeks to put the, the funding in that is in the budget request column for Counsel on Aging Wages Part Time and Expenses. It seeks to put that, that funding in, in place of what the recommended budget is. Is there a Finance Committee comment about this to explain this any further?
Yeah, I mean, the Finance Committee is still on the recommended budget, which is, as Scott Hawkins had just spoken to, that the, in absence of having been able to find a bus driver at that appropriation about from in fiscal year '25, that the move was to moving funds to the expense line item to fund it through per diem. And that is what the recommendation was from the Finance Committee.
Does anyone else want to speak on the motion? Yes, Bob.
I pointed out two, I pointed out two- I'd point out two, I'd point out two things. One is, a lot of people think the van doesn't have riders because people just don't ask for it. People don't ask for it because the service was sketchy, has been sketchy because we haven't been able to retain drivers. Again, you need money to get drivers. You also need some more incentives than just money. If you do it on a per diem basis, what you're basically saying is, come on and drive for us, but if nobody is, nobody calls in that day, you don't get any money. So you're setting aside the day, committing the day to being the driver, and you get nothing if somebody doesn't call for a ride. Second point I make is that if you look at last year's budget and this year's budget, the proposal I'm making actually increases the outlay about $2, $2 change. So we're talking about appropriating money. We're appropriating the same amount of money we did last year. It just goes into different pockets, including wages for the driver.
Anyone else?
Hi, Julie Lee, 180 South Street. This seems like a no-brainer to me, to pay a driver to drive elderly people to their appointments. I would tend to agree with Bob on this one. This is, I would encourage everybody to vote yes on this, the amendment.
Mary Porter, the finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. One of the things we can do during the course of a year, we often have requests to transfer funds between line items. So if circumstances change, and I'm speaking to people out here that are interested in having the active van driver, I think we'd be able to do some wage funding by line item transfer. June is giving me a look. She's, last two months of the year, okay. I think I have to yield on that, then I've been corrected by the one who is really good at this. Thank you, June. Or a reserve fund transfer, right. I guess what I'm trying to say, there's other mechanisms to do this, not here on the town floor. Am I correct? Yeah, thank you.
I'm told that we've solved our electronic problem. And due to borrowed clickers and stuff, we had potentials for conflict, and indeed, we found one. At this point, we think we have that solved. So we're going to see if we can do an electronic vote with this one. And again, be looking for the okay in the window after you vote. It takes a little bit, but then it usually comes on. The motion is to increase the numbers for the council on aging to those under the budget request column instead of those under the FinCom budget column. And to adjust the totals in that section accordingly. So I'll ask you to vote at this time electronically. Look for your okay. I'll call the voting on that to a halt. And we'll get the results of the vote. 270 yes, 108 no. So the motion to amend passes. Now, we have to take yet another vote because that was the amendment. We now have that, the amended motion on the floor as the main motion. And if you were in favor of it before, you should be in favor of it now. And if you were opposed to it before, you should be opposed to it now. And we'll take another vote because we need to in order to complete the record. My voting is open. If you're going to vote, please do it. All right, we'll call the voting closed. 293 yes, 76 no, the main motion passes. Okay, culture and recreation. Mr. Schultz.
I move to raise and appropriate $220,775 to fund items 85 through 91 as recommended by the finance committee for fiscal year 2026.
Okay. $220,775 for items 85 through 96. Anyone want to speak to that motion? I'm seeing no hands, so I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, no? Sounds like a young no. I'm going to call a unanimous vote. Debt and interest, proposed motion. Cliff, you got it?
I'm ready. Planning commission, right? That's what's next. That's you, Mayor.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out.
Debt and interest, right?
I move to raise and appropriate $279,775 to fund items 92 and 93 as recommended by the finance committee for fiscal year 2026.
Thank you. Raise and appropriate $279,775 to fund items 92 and 93. Anything to be said on that motion? Yes?
Bill Anderson, so what does the principal apply to?
Get closer to the mic.
What does the principal apply to?
What's the principle of that? Mr. Hawkins?
The principle applies to the loan we have for the highway barn. So the highway barn was built several years ago. The town does payments where we pay the equal amount of principal every year, and the amount of interest we pay goes down a tiny bit as you look in the budget.
Anyone else want to speak on the motion? Hearing no, and I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, no? Motion carries by unanimous vote. Intergovernmental expenses, and we have a number of motions under this. Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. This is the big one.
Mr. Moderator. I move to raise and appropriate $1,024 to fund item 94 as recommended by the finance committee for fiscal year 2026.
The total of $1,024 for the Central Massachusetts Planning Commission. Anything to be said on this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, no? Motion carries by unanimous vote. Next one. Assamit Valley.
I move to raise and appropriate $858,893 to fund item 96 as recommended by the finance committee for fiscal year 2026.
Motion made and seconded to raise and appropriate $858,893 to fund item 96 in the recommended budget. Anyone want to speak to that? Hearing no, and I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, no? Motion carries in the affirmative. Berlin-Bowelston Regional School District budget proposed motion. Yeah. Peg Stone.
I move to raise and appropriate $8,912,573 and transfer $323,002 from free cash for the sum total $9,235,575 to fund item 97 as voted by the Berlin-Bowelston Regional School Committee for FY '26.
Mr. Moderator, with your permission, I'd like to ask Superintendent Al Gannam to come to the microphone and speak briefly on this budget item.
Yes, certainly. Superintendent Schools? This is the first time you've addressed our town meeting, so introduce yourself.
I will, thank you. So, good evening.
You need to get closer.
So, good evening.
Al, come over and use this one.
How about that?
Al, use this one.
Try this one? Okay. How about this? Beautiful, great. So, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. So, good evening. For those that do not know me, my name is Al Gannam Jr. I am the interim superintendent of schools for Berlin-Bowelston Regional School District. With me tonight, there are some administrators, as well as Director of Finance and Operations, Aaron Osborne. I just want to give you a little bit of background and up-to-date about what's taken place with the school budget right now. I officially started, a little background, I officially started in August of 2024. I think it was actually the 24th of August of 2024. So I haven't been in the district too long. And Aaron Osborne, our Director of Finance and Operations, started in November of 2024 as well, too. We have been trying since we've been here to unravel our budget. And I know I've heard multiple times from committee members about what's been happening the last couple of years. And we will continue to work to unravel what has taken place. But in December of 2024, the Department of Education came to us and said that we needed to vote on a number. We need to have an operating budget. So on December 10th of 2024, the school committee voted and improved the budget of $24,793,688, with the Berlin assessment being at $8,442,194.67. That's how precise and specific we're being. Since that meeting, we have been, since that meeting, we have been working extremely close with the Department of Education and the school committee. When we first came on into this district, the Department of Education was working with this, with our school committee and working with the town of Berlin. And we were concerned about getting a 1/12 budget. Let me explain to you what a 1/12 budget means. It's basically when the Department of Education gives us an allowance. Every month, they give us a proportion of money so that we can pay our bills, pay our teachers, pay everything that needs to be done. Not the best way to recruit high-quality teachers and not the best way certainly have families come and stay in our district. So we have been working very closely with the Department of Education to make sure that we're avoiding that. And they see that we're working really hard and working with us on that. I have been doing this job for a little over 35 years now. And I have to let you know that I feel very fortunate to be working so closely with the school committee this year, led by Mike Taubman as our school committee chair. I know the Berlin representatives are here tonight, Beth Mancini and Lisa Mayer. Been very fortunate to be working with them this year. We have done everything since that December date to provide you an accurate and transparent budget, giving as much detail as we possibly can each and every time we have meetings. We have also been working and felt very supported by the town manager. I know Kristin and I speak on each other daily, if not a couple of times a day. So I appreciate that. And also working with the support from the select board and the capital boards of Berlin, very supportive of us. And I appreciate the work and the numerous meetings that we've had. So thank you for that. When we first presented the initial budget, we were much higher with an increase of probably 15.2%. All boards in Berlin came to us and said, you need to make some additional reductions, which we did. We were working with our admin, with our principals, with our school committee and the town of Berlin to make reductions in a very thoughtful and meaningful way. Not just making big swipes and saying, okay, we're going to cut Jim, we're going to cut Art, we're not doing, we didn't do any of that. We made sure we were very precise with our budget and making sure that the cuts were real. Fast forward brings us to a budget that was approved by school committee. On April 17th, a budget was approved of $24,413,390, with a total assessment to Berlin of $9,235,575. Berlin-FinCom made a recommendation of $9,128,867,000. We are off between the budgets between Berlin-FinCom and the school committee of $106,708,000. That's how far we're off, not a very large number at all. But please know that the difference will have significant cuts on our schools. Significant cuts on our schools' imposition. These are real. These are real reductions that will be taking place. So I understand and appreciate there was confusion in the past about our school budget. But please understand me, there is no confusion on this budget and the impact that it will have on our school and our children. We need to move forward and do what is best for our children and improve the school committee budget for FY2026. Please, please, don't let our children and our students pay for misunderstandings or even mistakes that have taken place in the past. If we don't pass and support the school committee budget tonight, that means we have a failed budget. What that also means is that my day will be spent tomorrow writing and issuing nonrenewal letters, and that's something we do not want to do, and that's how real these cuts are. So I ask you to support the school committee budget tonight. It is a meaningful budget, it is a budget that we spent a lot of time in preparing, and it's a real budget. Lastly, I would like to finish with a quote that I think many people have heard me see, heard in this budget process. "The best way to predict the future is to celebrate it, and the best way to create a better future is by investing in the education of our children." So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak and supporting the school committee budget for our children. Thank you.
Scott. Finance Committee comments.
Yes, a lot of things Al has said as well as going to actually speak to here, but I'll just jump through a few of the items. As he indicated, the difference that we have is one-hundred-and-six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eight dollars between the finance committee's recommended number and what the school committee recommended. And I also must congratulate, I mean, the administration for what they have done from the mess that they've had to clean up from the past year. If anybody attended or actually watched the October eighth Twenty-four School Committee meeting, it was quite depressing. I don't know how many people know about, as interim finance director at the time referred to it as jumping into his bees' nest. The accounting there was terrible. In fact, the previous administration left. They hadn't been paying their health insurance, they hadn't been paying into the funds that were taken out from the teachers' pay to their retirement, they had many other bills to be unpaid. So this is the situation that Al and, at the time, interim superintendents had to, or interim finance directors jumped into, and then, of course, now we have a full-time finance director that's also been trying to work on cleaning up this mess. In the meantime, communication has drastically increased, unlike last year in trying to meet with the administration going through the budget. We've had three times officially with the finance committee back in December, February, and March, and of course, as Al indicated, there was a lot of communications going through the town administrator as we worked through this. Our goal at the beginning has always been targeting a levy increase overall. This unfunds the towns and the schools of two-and-a-half percent. Last couple of years, two years ago, we at levy went to four percent increase. Last year, we were targeting, well, in the end, it was about four-point-two-five percent after the special town meeting, though it ended up actually going higher as new growth came in lower than when expected. But either way, the last two years have been having a levy increase of four percent or higher. Eventually, we also moved this budget to going to another four percent levy increase. When we got to that, that left a gap of two-hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars, and that was what requests that we had to the schools to reduce their operating budget by that amount. There also was equivalent, you know, from Boylston requesting a decrease of over six-hundred-thousand dollars. That also included Tohoto capital. So after those discussions, in the meantime, the Select Board, town administrator, also found additional savings in the town budget of another hundred thousand dollars, which we then allocated to the schools, leaving us in the end that one-hundred-and-seven-thousand-dollar gap where we are today. So right now, with the recommended budget by the finance committee, you're looking at levy increase of four percent. If you go with the school committee's recommended budget, it will increase the levy to approximately four-point-seven percent. Of course, we have also just increased the, for the COA, another point, one-seven percent increase on the levy, so you'd be looking at nearly a four-point-nine percent increase to the levy with what everything else has been added on at this point. So also, this is the, the recommended budget from the finance committee was recommended four to zero. The finance committee did vote regarding the school committee's budget, and that did not get a recommendation, it was voted two to two. And so on that, I'd also like to turn it over to Mary Porter, who was one of the no votes on the recommendation for the school committee's recommended budget.
Mary Porter.
Mary Porter, Finance Committee, back again here. I'm, I'm a no vote on the finance committee, and I wanna, I'm happy to see the room full. I'm, I'm interested in civic engagement, and I want to see as many residents of Berlin come to our town meeting and deliberate and discuss all of the issues in front of us. So maybe we have some parents that have never been to a town meeting, full democracy. Let me just say something about roles and responsibility when it comes to this intergovernmental budget point we're talking about tonight. So in Massachusetts, on budgets for schools in a regional district, the buck stops with the school committee. They're on top. Al Ganem here, our interim district superintendent. He reports through them, and the administration of the district does. We in the town have no control over what the school does, what the, what the school decides to cut or not cut, or how to spend money. We basically make recommendations, the finance committee, the select board, town administrator, we work together. We make recommendations on what the assessment to the town ought to be, and we do that in the context of how much revenue we have. And that's, that's, it's a hard question, it's always a hard question. But it is not the town making any of these decisions about the schools. It is within the rights and obligations and responsibilities and power of the, the school district, number one, and the school committee, again, is the end of the line. They're the final word. So, as Al Ganem mentioned, we've had a really rocky couple of years between the town and the school committee. And one of the results of that, Scott Schultz just mentioned, is last summer, the school district didn't pay bills. Now, at the time, we had a contract finance person working, working under Megan Grill, then the chair of the school committee. No bills were paid. This really alarms me, and it was discovered when Al Ganem brought in a temporary finance fellow who was very talented, he looked at it, he, Scott said at the October school committee meeting last year, he pointed out these things. But the further thing is, right here, our finance, Aaron Osborne, our finance director, current director at the school district, has been kind enough to be very transparent, answer questions, and just to give you an, an idea of what my thinking is when I, when I look at this, he provided us with a report, sort of top-line reports for the end of the year, December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four, for what's going on in the district. And, and he gave it to us with the caveat that entries were not done in a consistent basis, and he didn't really trust the numbers and that there was, there were problems with, and we've all, everybody speaking tonight has mentioned that these problems exist. And so I said, "Okay, I don't really know, from looking at this and from listening, I don't know what it costs to run the school district. I'm not sure the district knows what it costs to run it at the current service level that we have here in fiscal twenty-five." That's a concern for me, so when I hear people get frightened and say, "Oh, we're gonna have cuts," well, do you know that you don't have the revenue? Do you know you need an increase? How do you know that? We have two years of numbers we can't rely on. The, the last time that we spoke about it, the financial books for fiscal twenty-four had not been closed yet because of issues with the numbers. Okay, so now, I take seriously the responsibility to act on the finance committee and make recommendations for all the people, all the residents of Berlin. The pub, our public schools are an important pillar of our civil society, of our democracy. I am a big proponent of it, but I think you need to be fiscally responsible in how you do this. And I want you to know, quite sincerely, this is one of the hardest votes I ever made, because these guys are doing a bang-up job, they're doing fantastic job getting us back on track in the school district. But I'm looking at the tax hit that the residents of Berlin have taken, the cumulative hit. This is three years running, and I'm saying, you know, it's like Missouri, you show me. I don't have confidence that, that we're in dire, dire need and that we're gonna have to do this because I don't have confidence in the numbers. I have confidence in these people. When they tell me something, I believe them, I don't believe the numbers. And there's just been too many of these kinds of things. And, and the current budget, you know, anybody who's done budgeting, private or public sector, you take a look backward, back over the past couple of years, you say, "Okay, how can I project that into the future?" And then you look around the macro environment and you say, "Where do I think it's gonna go in the future?" And you make your best guesses on revenue and expenses. We can't look back. We don't have any reliable numbers in these past couple of years. So I, in good conscience, and I struggled, I struggled with this vote. And, and this is a great committee, but we split two-two because it is a hard decision. So one of the things I did is I looked for external indicators that were reliable. So I looked at the Massachusetts Department of Education, I looked at DESI data. We are, we are funded at a hundred-and-seventy-four percent the last two years of the minimum local contribution. So we're a very well-funded school district as you look around. You know, we're up there with like the Dovers and the Westons, but we're, you know, we're Berlin. And so we, we have supported, this town has supported our schools very well. Now, one other external point came up during a budget subcommittee meeting. The town of Boylston, second year in a row, said to the school committee during the budgeting process, "We can give you," talking about increase, not the, not the base budget amount, the increase from last year. So Boylston says, "You can have five-hundred-thousand-dollar increase, and how much we will fund you, no more." And the school committee accepted that limit, two years in a row. But then the school committee came to the town of Berlin and said, "Give us more." That bothers me. And it bothers me because when you look at our pupil ratio, our student ratio, at the elementary level, Berlin has two students for every three students in Boylston. And when you get to the middle school, high school level, we have about one student for every two student in Boylston. And our increase, year-on-year increase, this year and last year, in dollars, has been larger than Boylston's. Our increase is over five-hundred thousand. And, okay, there's a lot of variables, and people will say, "Well, it costs more to run here, Berlin Memorial." I get that, but the increase, I'm not talking about the basic amount, the increase year-on-year. That bothers me. So I, I want to sum it up, I'm taking a lot of time here, but, but I think I'm concerned about balancing everybody's interests. I'm concerned about the numbers. I'm very encouraged about the people, and I want to thank Al Ganem and Aaron Osborne for all their hard work. It has really been a struggle, I know that. And I, and I want to thank you, the voters, for coming out because the buck stops with the school committee on these, but ultimately, the buck stops with you. It's your vote. And I don't, I didn't really get up here to advocate one position or the other, I just wanted to explain to you my vote. All right. Okay. I mean, look at the numbers. There's, here, I, I brought this. If you look at the fiscal twenty-five budget that was in the December, may I speak? Thank you. If you look at the fiscal twenty-five budget that was in the accounting system that these men inherited, they, they broke it out, there's top-line categories in that budget report, they broke it out, district-wide, then the three schools. The total for the district-wide, this is the budget, this isn't entries of data, you know, as you're paying expenses and so on, this is the budget. The district-wide expense totaled one-million-three-hundred-thousand and some. But if you go to the allocation of the district-wide costs to the three schools, and you take those three allocations that are in there, in the budget numbers, they add up to one-million-six-hundred-thousand and change. So there's a, there's a, there's a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar error. That's why I voted no, because those, that's the basis on which you're building. And I trust all of you, the voters, will do the right thing. Thank you for your time, and thanks for listening.
Okay, the motion before you is to the school committee's number. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Heidi?
Thank you.
Peetard?
Heidi Peetard, Derby Road. I want to begin by emphasizing that I am a resident and a taxpayer in Berlin. I have a right to my opinions, I have a right to freedom of speech, separate from any committee or organization. I chose to live in Berlin because of its small-town characteristics, a nice suburb to lay down roots, eventually raise a family, my forever home. My main consideration was not school ratings or property values, rather the people that were living here, longtime residents, many with families going back several generations, a community that thrived with hard-working men and women. A desirable town to live in offers a good quality of life, encompassing safety, a clean environment, economic opportunities, accessible transportation, quality education, quality healthcare, affordable housing, and a strong sense of community, a community that values all its residents. This is my home, not just a pit stop along the way to somewhere else. As mentioned before, thirty percent of our population is sixty-five or older. I find it troubling that ten percent of that population lives at or below poverty level. The median household income in town is one-hundred-twenty-two-thousand-four-hundred-eleven dollars. This is not a high-income household people. This is not Weston or Wellesley, where the median household income is two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, or even Bolton or Harvard, where the median household income is two-hundred-thousand dollars. This is Berlin, with a median household income of less than a hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars. Now imagine facing the loss of your job or a layoff, a medical emergency that comes with high out-of-pocket expenses, or even the unexpected death of a spouse. Anything in savings, savings is quickly depleted. This is the income margin and age group I choose to speak out for. Many will not speak out in fear of personal persecution, the possibility of negatively affecting their employment, or even their business. In twenty-twenty-one, Berlin Family Food Pantry served twenty-seven households. In twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, that number increased to fifty households. Families are struggling to make ends meet, struggling to provide basic needs. I suspect there are more that could use the service that our Family Food Pantry provides, but pride may keep them away, or the thought that someone is worse off, and they don't want to strain the resources. Those in the community that are struggling financially are not going to make it common knowledge, struggling largely to the ever-increasing cost of living and tax burdens. The one place they would hope to find some understanding and relief is within their own community. Those struggling are not gonna put signs on their lawn that say, "Vote no," so I don't have to uproot my family from the home they have, from the only home they have. from the only home they have ever known. Vote no, so I don't have to serve my family hot dogs and mac and cheese for the fourth time this week. Vote no, so I don't have to choose between making my car payment or paying my electric bill this month. But that is the financial reality for many in our town. Maybe you see it, or maybe you don't. Maybe you choose to ignore it, but it's there. It could be your next-door neighbor and you don't even know it. It's insulting when we are told year after year, it's just another $11, $20, $100. We don't have any more "just others" to give. I'm sure you have all heard the term "fight or flight." Have you ever experienced it? It's like you're drowning or suffocating. And just when you have fought your way to the surface, another wave comes along and pulls you back under. It's a physiological response triggered by a threat. In this case, a threat to a stable way of life, the ability to provide a roof over your head, the ability to remain secure in your home, the ability to provide the basics for your family without asking for assistance. Being in the state of physical, psychological, and emotional stress takes a toll. It's debilitating. Repeatedly, I have heard, "Well, this is what other towns are doing. This is what other towns are spending. We have to do the same to be competitive." When did it become a competition? Stop with this "keeping up with the Joneses." Stop turning Berlin into the haves and the have-nots. If you were to consult with a financial advisor about your personal finances and household budget, the number-one piece of advice would be to live within your means. Living within your means should also apply and be expected of the school budget. The school budget is the tipping point, the push over the cliff when it comes to the town living within its means. It's time to rein it in and be considerate of all the residents of Berlin. Why are we expected to give more than we have for things some think they are entitled to? Entitled to no matter the sacrifice or the hardship it may create for others in the community. So I urge you to vote no on the proposed BBRSD budget. Make the schools live within their means. If we, as residents and voters, keep allowing this to happen year after year, they will keep coming back year after year with the same expectations. I have always been a "tell it like you is" person. I will not apologize for that. I will not sugarcoat, sanitize, or cower to political correctness, especially when I am expressing my personal opinions and feelings and defending with all that I have the right to remain where I chose to build my home and raise my family. And no, I will not stop standing up for myself. I will not stop asking questions, even if I am personally singled out and persecuted. I will not stop fighting for a fair and equitable budget so the middle-to-lower-income families and senior citizens can remain living in their homes where they have invested not only their hard-earned money, but also their heart and souls. I will continue to be a voice to make others aware of the threat that continues to rear its ugly head, inducing the fight-or-flight reaction. And when I am told to sit down, step away, or be quiet, I will just get louder.[799.94][799.97](APPLAUSE)
We've heard some talk on both sides of the issue. I'm happy to take more speakers. I'd like to hope that people will keep their comments brief enough so we'll get through here. Yes. Yep. Oh, actually, I think we have that one working now. Yeah.
So Rachel Worthheimer, I live over at Number One Village Link. I have three kids in the school system. One at... Excuse me. One who's given me a cold and two who are here at BMS, and one is at Dehonto. I also work for the Nation's Report Card. I did my first round of that last year, which means I've been in, I think we did 37 schools in the Massachusetts area last year, something like that. Which means I have a direct comparison of what our schools look like compared to other schools. We look really good. There are some schools that there are pieces falling off the walls. There are schools where those kids were packed in and we had to get those kids like scooted apart from each other just to be able to try to get an accurate assessment of how well those teachers are able to do. I'm voting yes tonight, even though I actually voted no last year, which people are probably a little surprised about. I voted no last year because of the lack of communication and the lack of clarity that we were getting about where things were coming from. And this year, I feel like having watched the conversations happening, even if I don't always agree with those conversations, I'm glad the conversations actually happened like grown-ups. So we're not keeping up with the Joneses. We're just trying to keep above water.
Chris? I had somebody here. Yes. Christine Flynn.
Chris Flynn, 244 South Street. After learning some things tonight, I'm just wondering about the misdeeds or the misstep of the former administration and the things that they did or didn't do, if we have some safeguards in place to make sure that doesn't happen again, and what we can do to keep tabs on what is going on presently.
Andre Tsaro, 104 Dudley Road. In 1950, the population of the world was 2.5 billion. When I was born, the population was 4 billion. Right now, it's over 8 billion. World becomes a very competitive place. And it came to Berlin, too. Our kids have to be competitive. The amount of information they have to handle is overwhelming. They have to go through a right school system. Berlin has good school system, and it runs at bare minimum. A lot of stuff here in this school runs by parents, by volunteers. The amount of work they do is incredible. They do it for free. Life becomes expensive. Berlin chosen to keep this rural feeling. There is not a lot of business. So all the money comes from property taxes. There's nothing we can do. We have to pay from our property taxes, right? So to pay our bills, we have to attract young families. And young families need, they need a good school system. So please, vote yes for proposed budget. Thank you, School Committee. You did incredible work.[1116.18][1116.21](APPLAUSE)
Applause just slows it down. When you vote, that's when it makes a difference.
Well, hello. Erin Osborne, Director of Finance and Operations. I'd like to, I think, start by sort of commenting on some of the things that folks brought up, the lovely lady here, who was concerned about sort of the follow-through on some of the concerns that may have happened over the summer. My department is audited every single year. We get a complete audit report. There will be findings. There will be accounting issues. There will be irregularities. I can tell you, I've gone through the books. Believe me if you want. There will be no misappropriation of funds. There will be no theft. There will be nothing to prosecute. There will be errors. There will be things put in the wrong place, things that weren't done. Bills that, for a while, weren't paid. Were paid up full. We are making all of the payroll errors right in this moment. We did take longer to close the books to make all of those things right. I can't speak to what happened in the past. I'm not going to fiscal '24 budget, fiscal '25 budget. I will say, though, that when I go through every single account, every single account I walk through, I go back over multiple years. One of the things, if you watched my budget presentations, you will see that I reduced electricity a little bit at Dehonto because they're spending, year on, year on, year, looking at three-plus-year averages and figuring out, looking at what I'm projecting. You have to project, right? You have to project what electricity is going to cost. I was able to cut that a little bit. I can't cut everything. Some things we have to increase. I also can't speak to how many pencils the principal at Dehonto needs, right? I have to trust that they're going to give me budget numbers and needs that are accurate. We all work as a team. We work together to do that. This isn't just one person throwing numbers at a wall to see if it sticks. A lot of people like to use the term "zero-based budget." It's a lovely catchphrase. I appreciate it. It sounds really good for people. That's more or less what we do. We do our best to look at things. But I can't count every pencil. I'm not walking in and asking everybody to account for every pencil. But there needs to be an understanding. I used X amount of paper this year. I think I'm going to use Y, X amount plus a little bit more this next year, or roughly the same amount. We all have to work from that, right? I'm going to speak to the "fight or flight." Anyone ever look at Zillow or Realtor? Right? Any ever see that school quality metric, right? Anyone see any school quality metrics or quality metrics of towns that speak to potholes per linear mile of road? No? No? Police response times even. Does Zillow report on that? Ambulance response times? Whether the COA has a van? I super, I want to say, I super appreciate the funding of that van.
Let's keep to one subject at a time.
Do you know what? One student, one student who we have to provide van transportation for costs us in excess of $50,000 a year, more often than not. We have to transport children who become homeless, for example, up to an hour and a half. That van ride is $300 each way. Or, I'm sorry, for the day, sorry. Times 180 days, that's $54,000. We get some reimbursement for that. It's not full. It's subject to state appropriation. So I will say, in one of our early meetings with the FinCom, I projected an amount for homeless transportation. If I were to be putting that number in now, I would be tripling that number minimally. But we can't. We provided a budget number. We're going to stand by that. We're going to move things around and we're going to make things work. That's what we do as a school district, okay? Anyone know the law of big numbers, right? Things smooth out. Bigger numbers, bigger numbers, they smooth out, okay? When you're dealing with small, local schools, you're dealing with the inverse, the opposite. You're dealing with the law of small numbers. Small things produce big changes in a district this small. So I will tell you, if you watch the presentations, we shared that a number of students who are out-of-district students at Boylston Elementary School moved up to Dehonto or moved out. Once they move to Dehonto, there are shared costs. So yes, Berlin picks up a piece of that, right? If they move out, it's off of Boylston's books. Berlin didn't have that benefit this year. They may next year. They may in a future year, right? You will have windfalls potentially because of the small size. But you will also get hit with one-offs. I can't escape the fact that health insurance went up by 18% this year for regular employees and retirees. That is an enormous cost to us. That is more than a 2% increase to our overall budget there alone. Right? That's enormous. I can't get away from that. Transportation going up 20%, right? Those are uncontrollable costs. I'm describing 90% of our budget. Sit down with me. Come, set an appointment with me. We'll sit down, we'll go through our budget. I will show you every single uncontrollable cost. The vast majority of our costs completely uncontrollable. We're telling it like it is, right? Uncontrollable. I can't control it. Student goes homeless, boom, we're paying for it. Student goes out of district because of an IEP decision, boom, we're paying for it. $200, $250,000 combined costs. Some reimbursement, sure, the next year.
Can you be summing up, please?
Telling it like it is. Thank you.
Can you sum up, please?
Yep. Have a great night. Yes on the budget, please.[1518.18][1518.21](APPLAUSE)
Tom Andrew.
Tom Andrew, 11 Pleasant Street. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move the question.
Motion is made to move the question. Is there a second? Okay. This means we move to a vote. The vote we will first take is to stop debate. The first vote we take is to stop debate. When I ask you to vote on this, and we will do this electronically, you will vote yes if you want to stop talking about the subject and move to the vote. And you vote no if you want the discussion to continue, okay? So at this time, we'll open an electronic vote to stop debate on this question at hand. And you can be voting now. I'll call and enter the voting on the motion to the question. And we'll get the results. 361 yes, 19 no. The motion that the question carries. And we will proceed to the vote. The motion on the floor, I will repeat for you, is to raise and appropriate $8,912,573 and to transfer $323,002 from free cash for the sum total $9,235,575 to fund item 97 as voted by the Berlin-Boylston Regional School Committee for fiscal year 2026. And again, I'll ask you to vote electronically. And you can begin voting now. I will call the voting to a close. 270 yes, 111 no. The motion carries the affirmative. If you are leaving, please make sure you turn in your voting instrument.
Thank you. I'm good.
Do you see where Barry went?
Do you know where Barry went?
Yes, you will be. I won't be here. I am on vacation. As soon as this town meeting is over, I won't be here.
I'll ask people to be seated again.
All right, let's go.
We have one more motion under the budget, miscellaneous benefits and insurance. Heidi P. Toward of the Finance Committee.
I move to raise and appropriate $1,891,775 to fund items 99 through 105 as recommended by the Finance Committee for fiscal year 2026.
This is the motion to raise and appropriate $1,891,775 for items 99 through 105. Anything else to be said on that motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Okay, Article 5. Going back up to page 3, and we have Article 5, which is the Capital Improvement Plan, and you will note that it's set up in three motions, and we'll take the first of those. Anna Crane of the Capital Improvement Committee.
Anna Crane, capital planning. Motion 5A, I move to transfer $274,403 from free cash to fund the fiscal year 2026 Capital Improvement Plan budget for the products or items as printed in Article 5 of the warrant.
And we have items 1 through 7 that are included in that motion, right?
Yes. Yes. These are items 1 through 7. The municipal building sidewalk repairs, an F-450 replacement, a mower vac system replacement, sidewalk and parking lot repairs, retaining wall repairs, and door replacement for the library, as well as a mower for the cemetery.
If you want to make this so you have your clear accounts for the accountant, you need to say for items 1 through 7 as part of this motion.
Ah, for items 1 through 7.
You want to amend it and add that to it? As shown in Articles, items 1 through 7?
You want me to amend that?
Yes. I thought that this, the chart was going to be part of the motion, so that's why I...
Okay, so I'll try it again. I move to transfer $274,403 from free cash to fund the fiscal year 2026 Capital Improvement Plan budget for the products or items as printed in Article 5, Article 5A of the warrant, items number 1 through 7.
Thank you. I'll take that as the motion. Okay. Okay, speak to it.
Are we doing these individually? Oh, so it covers these seven items that I just listed already? One for facilities, two for highway, three for library, and the mower for cemetery.
Finance Committee's comment. Oh, okay, you've got, you've got a recommendation for all three of these?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else to speak on it? If not, the motion is $274,403 from free cash for items 1 through 7 under motion 5A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Do you have... Beat?
I do. Okay, motion 5B. I move to transfer $450,000 from ambulance receipts reserved to fund the fiscal year 2026 Capital Improvement Plan budget for the products or items as printed in Article 5B of the warrant, item number 8.
$450 for the ambulance?
Yes.
And that, too, was covered by the recommendations of both Capital Planning and Finance Committee? Anything you want to say further on it?
So this is a replacement for our eldest ambulance. It's not quite due to be replaced just yet, but by the time this new ambulance is built, it will be due to be replaced. And so we're trying to get our purchases sort of in before prices may or may not increase. And this is completely funded by the ambulance for the new ambulance.
Someone else want to speak on the motion? Is that a hand up down there? No. If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor, $450... All those in favor of $450,000 for new ambulance, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. And motion C.
I move to transfer $208,774 from the Public Safety Stabilization Account to fund the fiscal year 2026 Capital Improvement Plan budget for the products or items as printed in Article 5C as of the warrant. So these are Articles number 9, or items number 9 through 15.
Motion is for $208,774 from the Public Safety Stabilization Account for items 9 through 15 in Article 5, and again, covered by the recommendations of both of those committees. Do you want to speak to it further?
So this is using public safety mitigation funding that comes from some of our commercial endeavors, specifically for public safety items, to fund them for next year.
You'll note it says it requires a 2/3 vote, and that's one of the reasons why these got divided up in between them, is because these we thought required a 2/3 vote, but Town Council tells us there's been a change in state law, which makes, because this is a special purpose account for public safety, the money was already reserved for public safety, a simple majority is now all that's required. Does anyone else want to speak to this one? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 6, Mr. Hawkins.
I move to transfer $50,000 from free cash to the other post-employment benefit stabilization
Motion made and seconded in the same form as it is in your warrant, Mr. Hawkins.
That fund is for other post-employment benefits as a retiree health insurance fund, and it's a fund that's required by law for us to have just in case the town disappeared so that our employees can still continue to get their post-employment benefits. According to our cash advisory plans, we put about 10% of free cash into that each year. That would be about $130,000. We know there's some more important capital plans for right now, and so our recommendation is only putting $50,000 into that account right now, which still puts us pretty decently when it comes to how towns are generally funding it.
Finance Committee has recommended it. For or nothing, anything further from Finance?
No.
Does anyone else want to speak on this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Yes, Peg.
Oh, no, I was ready for the next article. I go?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I move to transfer $10,000 from free cash to fund an update to the Town of Berlin's Classification and Compensation Plan.
Motion made and seconded in the same form as it is in your warrant. Speak to it, Peg.
The original compensation and salary plan we had done pre-COVID. Obviously, things have changed since 2019, and also to address a question brought up by a resident in regard to how come certain people are getting paid a specific amount, this classification study will help us look at what other towns are doing to take care of our employees of the Town of Berlin.
We have a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee. Anything further? Anyone else want to speak? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Scott.
I move to transfer $50,000 from free cash to fund an unanticipated building, vehicle, and equipment maintenance or repairs.
Motion made and seconded in the form that's in your warrant, Scott.
This is a new fund. We've historically funded building repairs and vehicle repairs through regular expenses out of the budget, except as you know of anyone who owns a home, that some years there's a lot more and some years there's a lot less, and the paperwork burdens when you guess wrong are not fun. And so what we're trying to do is we anticipate about $50,000 a year or so is what we probably need in repairs. We'll probably transfer money into this fund every year, but the cost of these expenses are no longer in the regular operating budget that falls to our raise and appropriate every
This has a recommendation, a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee. Anything further?
No.
Anyone else want to speak on this? So this is a new way of funding this stuff, and the account will stay there until it's used up, doesn't stay with just one fiscal year. I was asking that, questioning the accountant, and she said, yes. Anyone else? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 9.
Paul McKelk, Carter Street. I move to amend the table under Article 10 of the Town of Berlin's general bylaws pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, by adding the following: source of receipts and use of funds, sources, transfer station stickers, and recycling fees, uses, expenses associated with operating the transfer station, including part-time wages.
Paul, you want to speak to it?
This is just another move in terms of getting the transfer station, let's say, self-sufficient. We are collecting fees for items, and we have transfer station sticker fees as well, and we deal with a fairly volatile budget every year, and so our feeling is we can probably manage things a little closer if we have access to the revenues that we bring in, we can allocate them to the appropriate needs, short of coming to town meeting and asking for extra money.
This, and basically this is to get the part-time wages into another way we can use the income.
Correct.
Yes. This fund has existed in the past, but without that change. Is there something from Finance on this?
Yes.
Okay. So this is, in Article 20 of the town bylaws, we have a list of all these different funds, and this is a modification of the one for the transfer station. I'll ask you to vote. Well, is there anyone else that wants to speak on it? I'm sorry, I guess I bypassed that one. Hearing nobody, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. And we have Article 10. Peg.
I move to set the maximum amount that may be spent during fiscal year 2026, beginning July 1, 2025, for the revolving funds established under Article 20 of the Town General Bylaws for certain departments, boards, committees, or officers in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, as written in Article 10 of the warrant.
Okay, that's the, the motion is as it is in the proposed motion in your warrant. Do you want to say anything about it, Peg?
Yeah, again, this is something that comes up year over year. It basically allows the committees and departments that you see on the piece of paper in front of you to spend the money that they receive up to that certain amount, without having to come back and ask for more.
Is there any comment from Finance? Anything to be said on it? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Peg.
I move to, this is for Article 11 Cable Access Committee. I move to appropriate from the public, educational, and government, otherwise known as PEG, access and cable-related fund in the sum of $68,010 as a grant to be used for fiscal year 2026 operating purposes in accordance with the PEG access grant in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F 3 1/4, says sums to be expended by the Cable Access Committee.
Yep.
Pretty much, again, this has appeared on the warrants for as long as time has happened. This is money coming to our Cable Access Committee, which allows them to provide the public services that they do to the town.
Anyone else want to speak on the motion? Finance Committee has a unanimous recommendation in favor. Hearing no one else, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Unanimous vote. Article 12, Community Preservation Act Budget for the Year. Tim Wheeler of the Community Preservation Act Committee.
Tim Wheeler, 232 Pleasant Street. I move to approve the fiscal year 26 Community Preservation Act budget as described in Article 12 of the warrant.
And that is, yes, that's the, that's the motion that was printed? Tim?
So we continue to generate Community Preservation Act funds through fees that are collected through the town and a match from the state. We take the total of those two figures, and we're required to place 10% on an annual basis into three buckets, one for community housing, one for open space and rec, and one for historic preservation. 5% can be put into administrative costs, and the remainder goes into a budgeted reserve account, which can be used for any of those three buckets. The money that's allocated into the 10% category stays in those categories. The administrative fees flow back into the budgeted reserve if they're unexpended, and the budgeted reserve grows over time if we don't expend it and can be used, as I said, for any of the proposed options. So this year, you'll see three articles that address the use of CPA funds, and those will follow this general budget allocation.
Finance Committee has a 4O recommendation in favor. Anything further? Anyone else want to speak on this? This is the routine business of the allocation of funds under CPA. Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 13, Community Preservation Act Committee, Mount Pisgah Access. Yes, sir?
Ethan Bickford, 86 Village Court. Motion, I move the town vote to appropriate the total sum of $30,000 from the fiscal year 2025 fund balance reserved for open space and recreation to provide additional safe parking and access to Horseshoe Pond and the Mount Pisgah Trail Network. Said funds to be expended by the Conservation Commission in consultation with the Community Preservation Act Committee.
And I need your paper. And that is the motion as it is in your warrant, and it has the recommendation of both the Community Preservation Act Committee unanimously and the Finance Committee unanimously. You want to speak to it?
Yes. Just some quick additional details. The proposed motion is to use CPA funds to build a parking lot on Lyman Road for the new Horseshoe Pond conservation land, which abuts the Mount Pisgah area. This would also provide additional off-road parking for the aqueduct, which is frequently used as a trail. The funds would also be used to remove the old asphalt driveway, which is ill-suited to a parking area, and install a 75-foot by 35-foot parking lot that will be constructed with a gravel drainage base topped with millings and should provide parking for six to seven cars plus one handicapped accessible spot. The parking area will be fenced along the back and sides, and a compacted stone dust path will lead to the meadow with two benches with adjoining wheelchair pads. Excess funds, if any, will be returned to CPA.
Anyone else want to speak to the motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Article 14, Community Preservation Act Historical Collection. June Miller, the Chairman of the Historical Commission.
I move to appropriate the total sum of $13,500 from the fiscal year 25 fund balance reserved for historic preservation for the engagement of a consultant for professional guidance to inform the accessioning and deaccessioning of the town's collection of historic clothing and accessories. Said funds to be expended by the Historical Commission in consultation with the Community
Want to speak to that, June?
Sure. A large portion of our town historical collection consists of clothing, and it needs to be assessed professionally because it will enhance the town's knowledge and ability to preserve the significant pieces, and we do have many. It will help inform the commission's volunteers to best preservation practices and help address the issue, which is major for us, of insufficient storage space. So the amount requested would fund the services of a preservation consultant for about 25 days. It will be over a period of a year. This consultant that we've been talking with would spend about two days a week, more or less, amounting to about a month overall, and the remainder would purchase enough archival supplies to support the assessment.
We have a Finance Committee recommendation and a CPA Committee recommendation, both unanimous in favor. Does anyone else want to speak to this one? If you'll forgive me for putting on a Historical Commission hat and taking off the moderator one for a minute, we had a lot of people in the Historical Society and the Commission who had a lot of knowledge about clothing stuff, and they've all left us, mostly for South Berlin or North Berlin Cemetery. And so, when you get to the point where I'm the expert on the ladies' clothing, you're in bad trouble. Anyway, that's what we're after here. Back to being moderators, is there somebody else that wants to speak?
Brenna Ewing, Pleasant Street. I am the daughter of one of the experts and a former employer of the other experts who are both in the cemeteries, and I, too, am an expert, and no one has asked me. Fashion and fabrics is something that I am an expert in, so I don't know that we really need to spend this money. need to spend this money. Or maybe you want to pay me to do it.
Anyone else? If not, the motion is as it was printed in your warrant for Article 14, and I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Article 15. Peg.
I move the town vote to appropriate the total sum of $10,000 from the FY25 fund balance reserved for the historic preservation to engage an architect to determine if a new entrance can be established on the front north side of the building, where there is now a cement stair, and to design a gradual stair structure from the sidewalk to the front door. Said funds to be expended by the Select Board in consultation with the Community Preservation
Motion is made and seconded in the same form as the one printed in your warrant. Peg.
In a nutshell, anyone who has tried to navigate the granite stairs up to the 1870 Town Hall has found that it's quite the adventure. Sometimes they wiggle, sometimes they move, sometimes does the railing. So, what we're going to do with this $10,000 is look to engage an architect to tell us what it would take to build a staircase up the side, which right now people generally go up the shared driveway of the resident who lives there and take the two steps into the 1870 Town Hall. This is part one of two, depending upon what comes back from the architect with a proposal for work and a proposal for cost. We may be coming back next year to request that amount of money from CPA, but right now this is just for the architect.
The CPA Committee and Finance Committee both have unanimous recommendations in favor. Does anyone else want to speak on this motion? Hearing none, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries in the affirmative. Scott?
Article 16, I move that the town vote to change the position of Town Clerk from elected to appointed by the Select Board, provided the incumbent shall continue to hold the office and perform the duties thereof until expiration of the term for which they are elected or until otherwise vacated to the office.
Motion is made and seconded, same form as it was in the warrant.
This is the first of a couple of motions on my part and the Select Board's part to try to sort of simplify both town elections, but specifically for this position, Town Clerk has become one of those highly regulated, highly skilled sort of positions. And although we have a fairly competent, or a highly competent person actually right now in the position, the idea that potentially when or if she ever retires, we would have someone else in town who has those certifications and clarifications who's willing to run is, I think, unlikely. And so, I was getting ahead of this problem before it is one, starting the process to turn this from elected to appointed. If this passes tonight, it would also still have to pass at the ballot box next week before we would start the process. It's probably still a couple of years, even if we vote in favor tonight, to get it through all the steps it needs to.
Anyone else want to speak on the motion? Yep.
Gaven Livingstone, Lyman Road. I would like to vote with my clicky on these next five items, four items. I personally oppose this approach and hope you would also. Thank you.
Hello, yourselves.
Greetings. Please join me in keeping the Town Clerk's office independent. When you are appointed, you must follow the direction of your appointing authority, or you can be fired for insubordination. Once elected cannot be dominated by another elected board.
Others that wish to speak?
Jason Capricota on Pleasant Street. I agree with what she says. It's a slippery slope. I don't think we should have everyone kind of appoint their own friends, so I think everyone should be elected. Thank you.
Other others?
Brenna Ewing, Pleasant Street. There comes a time when we need to consider the possibility of stepping up as free people representing our neighbors and so on, and we need to come forward and actually run for office to take over from the previous generation. So, the time is now. We don't want to lose the ability to select our Town Clerk. That's not a good idea. We don't want to appoint, we don't want to have somebody else do that for us. We need to step up.
Wayne Dixar, Gates Pond Road. You know, I really appreciate the fact that it's important to have elected officials, but I think at the same time, I think the intent is that, you know, these positions that, you know, that the Town Clerk holds does have a lot of responsibility. There are people out there. I think the comment about people appointing their friends, I don't think that's the intent of the Select Board to appoint somebody from town that's unqualified that's their friend. I don't think that's, I think that would be very quickly addressed by the townspeople if that was the situation, but I think that you need professionalism. I mean, it's like just as well as you can say, you know, we want to have an elected official, you could have somebody that's completely incompetent, who has a lot of friends in town, running for the position, and then you have, I won't use the word, person, you know, in such an important position that has absolutely no knowledge, expertise, or knowledge of the position. Because if I decided to run for Town Clerk and all my friends wanted to vote for me, I'd be a new Town Clerk, and I wouldn't know what the hell I'm doing. So, I think it's important to think about, you know, how do you get somebody that's, it's an important role? And I don't think it's, I think back in the day, it was a lot less perhaps involved, but I don't think it's that anymore. And I think as we look at these positions that are coming up to be appointed, we should look at it, you know, as to what is the expertise? And when you do look at who's running for town offices, people are not coming out of the seams. They show up to vote for a budget, and they all clear out, but they're not here to do the hard work of looking at the budgets, serving on the school committee, serving on the Select Board and things like that. So, it's really easy to say, you know, don't let the Select Board or others, you know, appoint positions like this. But, you know, where's, I agree with what Brenna said about it's important to stand up and serve. I do serve on committees and have for a long time, but I don't see that from other members for whatever reasons they can't, but to then say, you know, we shouldn't be able to appoint and as a result maybe have somebody that's not as qualified, that's, to me, more scary,
Hi, I'm Lisa Mayer from Ball Hill Road. I just want to say I think that we should really keep it, keep these positions elected because if we make them appointed, we're losing our voice as voters, you know, just little bit by little bit. And I have friends in other towns who complain all the time about their appointed officials, and they really wish that all of those positions were elected.
Brenna.
It's Brenna again. I would like to speak to the fact that half the room cleared out, and that pretty much consisted of everyone under 50, except for the children that remain. And if we weren't catering to their bedtime schedule, they could wait till later on in the night for their vote, so then it would all still be here.
Lisa Weissaki, 133 Derby Road. I just want to note, too, this is the only position in our town that is basically a full-time paid position that is being elected. It has not been contested since 1996. There is not an assistant Town Clerk who wants to step up into the position. We have nobody in the pipeline, and this is a really important job. This is your elections, this is your records, all of these different things. It's really important that whoever goes into this next is qualified, and oftentimes we end up with writing canon, or I'm running right now for Select Board and I am not being opposed. So, I don't see how you can take a position like this and keep it as an elected position. We need to be proactive and make sure that we can hire somebody who's qualified into the position. Thank you.
Peter Mosher.
Peter Mosher, 16 Brigham Road. My dad was Town Clerk and Treasurer of Tana Dartmouth for many years. I've seen firsthand what goes into this job and this role. I respect the current Town Clerk. I think she does a fantastic job, and that's probably why she hasn't been opposed for so long. I think it's important, when I look at this town, it's an open town meeting, which is not common in a lot of other towns where they have representative town meetings. I like the fact that we elect people directly and don't concentrate power in appointing authorities. I think we should keep this as an elected position.
Tom Purno, Ball Hill Road. I just want to point out that people are saying it's elected now and then it's going to be appointed, but it's going to be appointed by people that we elect, and I think that's being lost in all this. So, it's not like this person gets appointed and nothing can happen to them in the future. It's the people that we elected appoint them, and we can elect different people to appoint different people. That's the only point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Lynn Ryan.
Lynn Ryan, Central Street. I think it's important that we keep independence in the Town Clerk's office. I don't know how anyone would dare run for Town Clerk if they didn't have the knowledge, and I think we do have folks in the pipeline that would be prepared to fill in in the future. Thank you.
You ready to vote? Take electronic vote on this one. We've got some disagreement. Let's see what the numbers actually are. I'll ask you to vote on this. The motion is the same as it was in the warrant, and the, I'll ask you to start voting now. A yes vote makes an appointed position. This question is on the ballot as well next week. It isn't, if you vote yes now, it isn't automatic that it's all decided. It still has to go to the ballot. Has to pass both places for it to become effective. Okay, I'll call, close to the voting, and we'll get the results. We have 45 yes and 113 no. So, the motion fails.
Article 17, I move that the town vote to change the position of Constable from elected to appointed by the Select Board. The Constable is also currently in an elected position, although most of their duties have generally been delegated-
Speak a little slower so everybody will understand you.
The Constable is currently in an elected position, although they generally have two roles. One is to, I think, post eviction notices, and one is to post the town warrant for meetings. Most of those are generally delegated already to policemen. Matter of fact, one of the two Constables has been a police officer, and so this is to make that positions formally appointed.
Other others that wish to speak? This one would change the position of Constable from elected to appointed. Other others that wish to speak on this motion? Would somebody care to actually talk about what the legal position of Constable is? Legal?
No. I just wanted to ask a question.
Okay, ask a question.
So, to what Barry is asking, is there someone that can speak on, can you answer some questions for us about the Constable positions? Is this somebody that has to live in the town? Are they employee of, is it like a voluntary situation right now, the way it's set up? Anybody? Yes, please.
Town Administrator?
If it's an elected position, yes, it has to be somebody from town. If it's appointed, no. Typically, you use employees, it's usually police officers that work for the town already that serve as Constables.
I'm going to inject a piece of information. I looked this up a while back, and at that time in the law, it defined the Constable's duties as the same as those of a police officer. And there was a time when the town used to elect the Constable as the police chief. It was kind of like a vote of confidence in the police chief, but since we've had multiple police chiefs who lived out of town, we've had to cast about and get police officers that did live in the town to take the position, and sometimes that's been a little bit difficult. So, do you really want to give somebody who wasn't trained, police powers? Now, most of the time what the Constable actually does is post the warrants for these meetings, and not a heck of a lot else, but that is, those are things that rest there in terms of the legal situation.
Peter Hoffman, Randall Road. I move to call the question.
Motion to call the question, is there a second? I did hear a second, I'm sorry. This is a motion to call off debate. It requires a two-thirds vote because you're taking away other people's right to speak. All those in favor of going, proceeding directly to the vote, say aye.
Aye.
All those who wish to continue the debate, say no. Ah, guess we know what to do there. Again, we're changing elected to appointed. I'm going to elect that we use the clickers. You can start voting electronically now. I'm going to ask you to, I'm going to close the voting, and we'll get the results. Seventy-five yes, seventy no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Again, remember, this has to go to the ballot as well, and also be approved there. Scott?
Article 18, I move the town vote to change the positions of trustee of trusts from elected to appointed by the select board.
Motion made and seconded to change the position of trustees of trusts, well, it used to be trust funds, but that's life, to be appointed.
Again, this is a committee that's on the ballot, a member, I think, every year. They have met twice since 2015. They oversee some of the small funds that we have to make sure they're properly spent, most of which is currently done sort of by the accountant office already. And so this is to move this from elected to appointed.
Do others wish to speak? If not, we'll move to a vote again. Take these. All those in favor, vote yes. Calling into the voting. And we'll get the result. Seventy-eight yes, sixty-five no. And that will, again, that's, we'll go to the ballot next week, and we'll see how it comes out. Peg?
I move the town vote to authorize the select board to petition the general court on the Commonwealth to change the Berlin Select Board from a three-member to a five-member board, and if that legislation is enabled, that it be recorded as a special chapter in the Town of Berlin's bylaws.
Again, the motion is in the same form as it is in the proposal and the warrant. Peg?
This is a, a yes vote will allow us to go on a fact-finding mission. Something like this, like our neighboring towns of Lancaster and Sterling, have been doing since the years of 2018 and 2019. So it's not like at the next election, that poof, there will be new people on the board. There's lots of things to work out. There's lots of information to be gathered, to be presented back to the town to allow us to do this. We'll need to do surveys. We'll need to consult with other towns. We'll need to consult with our legislatures on this, on the best way to do about it, to talk to Lancaster and Sterling, what worked, what didn't work, what wish they had done better. And remember, it doesn't matter if it's three-person board or a five-person board, it's the quality of the people that are running. And if anyone's looking for numbers, there are currently 140 towns in Massachusetts that have a select board of three, that have a similar population and registered voters as Berlin. And there are 150 towns in the state of Massachusetts with a five-board, select board, similar population and ranges. This also, as one resident pointed out, there are numerous committees that the select board supports in terms of liaison positions. Having a five-member board will allow us to spread out that work, instead of one trying to juggle three or four committees. And also, if there is a need for a subcommittee, unfortunately, right now, with only two people, we can't talk about it. We can't work together, so the work only falls to one member. When you have a board of three, if one person is traveling, one person is sick, the process, sick, the process stops. If you have a board of five, and two people are out, you still keep going. So there are numerous advantages to doing this. Of course, there's always going to be disadvantages. People will talk about, well, I can't get along with three, how am I going to get along with five? Again, you're looking to bring in additional experience and skills. And hopefully, having a five-member board will encourage more people to run for the select board. So for those people who, you know, look at, we need to move the Town of Berlin forward, here's your opportunity, if we vote, to step up and run.
Are there others that wish to speak on this?
I just had a question.
Want to speak more directly into the microphone?
I just had a question. Have we had more than three people consistently running for select board? Do we have that many people who are interested in serving in the role?
For the last several votes for a select board, there have been unopposed. So not many people run for this position.
Are there others? Dee, will you help get the mic down?
Hi, Charlene DeCaligero, Village Court. I really am trying to turn and face you. Yeah, so advantages, advantages and disadvantages to everything. One of the slightly subtler advantages to this is that if you were thinking of running, but you feel like it's too much work for three people, it might be less work for one of five, as opposed to one of three. So that's part of the hope, is that it will encourage people to run as, you may remember a time, not that long ago, when we had no town administrator, and the select board did all the work, or a lot of the work that the town administrator now does. So this is another step towards making this kind of position more doable in theory. Thank you.
Are there others? If not, we'll move to a vote. Again, I'm going to ask you to vote electronically on this. If you want a five-member select board, vote yes. I'll call and halt to the voting, and we'll get the results. And again, this doesn't require a ballot vote. This is, but this does require a petition to the legislature to get a, get the change. Okay. Article 25, 20, transfer and disposition of the Legion Hall.
I move the town vote to transfer Legion Hall to the Municipal Affordable Housing
Okay, motion is made and seconded in the form that is there. You want to speak to it?
I had put together a nice fact sheet, but I noticed that there was a big stack left out there, so I'm just going to go over that a little bit. The Berlin Legion Hall is located on 15 Lincoln Road. It was built in the 1920s. It originally served as a school. The structure is approximately 1,500 square feet and sits on about .46 acres. It has been vacant for several years. A recent facility study includes a forecast of systems expenditures, and that's on the back. So the facility study came out with a number of about $213,000 over the next several years that would have to go into the building just to get it back up to a sort of a baseline. The proposed project that the housing trust is, that the property be turned into an affordable community housing project in partnership with an organization such as Habitat for Humanity. The existing structure would be converted into a single-family home. The process for selecting a builder, for any town project of this scope, Mass General Law requires a formal request for proposal, RFP process. This process is open to individuals or organizations who can meet the specified requirements. The trust would seek proposals from qualified entities, with preference given to nonprofit organizations. The goal would be to construct an affordable housing unit to be sold to a qualified home buyer. The buyer would be selected through a lottery conducted by a certified monitoring agent with the experience and capacity to ensure the project meets RFP standards and achievements, and achieves maximum affordability. So this would be a truly affordable home, not like several of them in town meet the median. This would be a truly affordable home. Can the home be prioritized for someone who meets specific criteria, such as a veteran or Berlin resident? This has come up quite a bit. The trust can express a preference. There is no guarantee that individuals meeting specific criteria will be, enter the lottery or qualify under the affordable housing guidelines. We would likely express the criteria that we would want preference given to a veteran, given that it was the Legion Hall for many, many years. The structure is historic. The trust is currently in discussions with the state regarding a formal historic restriction, similar to a conservation restriction, which would preserve the historic exterior of the building. And we have spoken with Habitat. They've been at the building, and they are completely on board with anything that we would request from a historic standpoint. They actually prefer it because it's much less expensive for them to keep that historic exterior than it would be to change it out. The only thing that could come up would be, like asbestos. The property is small, so the septic would likely have to be something such as a presby system. We have not parked the property yet, so this could obviously be an issue. But we did not want to put in the money before we came to town meeting to ask for the property to be turned over to the trust for the project. So that would be the first step after we got the property. So that's where we are.
Oh, let's see. There's no recommendation from finance on this?
Dave Bratton, Boylston Road. So just question is, so how much is it going to cost us to turn this house into a affordable housing unit? And what, you know, what's going to be the expectations on, like, taxes received and, you know, the people that are living there? Like, do we have to fund anything else once it's built?
So we had requested CPA funds to do this project. However, the way that it works is Habitat would actually take on the project. We would give them the property, they would take on the project. The housing trust would probably give them a bit of a fund, like, I think I've seen something in the neighborhood of $25,000, but that would come out of the CPA funds that we have already requested, that we already have. So there wouldn't really be any sort of additional ask. There would not be, this would actually be taking things off of the town's plate, because we'd be no longer, no longer be paying things like insurance and electricity and all of those things, or any of the upkeep on the building. And then you would get a homeowner in there who would be paying taxes. I don't have numbers on that. That wasn't a question that came up at any point, so I don't have numbers on that. But it would be a truly affordable home, so, and the property is small, so it's not crazy amounts of taxes, but there would be a tax resident in there.
It's important to note that the building we're talking about is the last of our one-room schools that the town still owns, the West School, which has been used by the Legion as their meeting place for 50 years plus, 70 years plus. Your, and note that it's a two-thirds majority, and that reason for that is that you're actually giving permission for the property to be sold with this vote.
Hi, Allison Castner, Ball Hill Road.
You need to get closer to the mic, dear.
Can you hear me on the back? Allison Castner, Ball Hill Road. My question is that, it sounds like the do-nothing case, if we were to vote this down, is not free. Right now, the town is paying something for this property? And so are you able to help us with what, how to compare A versus B? Like, what is the current cost of not doing this option?
Well, the, the property's currently sitting empty. It's already had issues with mold and various things having to be remediated. The Legion hasn't met in there since COVID, so you're basically having a property that's sitting empty. Like I said, there was a facility study done, and in order to sort of, there's, there's a list of, I guess, interiors, $18,700 worth of work, plumbing, $5,000, HVAC, $3,000, electric, And it sort of goes on. So the number that they gave to, to just get the building back to sort of a really usable state would be $213,800.
So respectfully, it sounds like a lot of good work has been done to create a better use of this property than has been going on since COVID. The problem that I'm having with it is that this is a town-owned property, and, and we're going to move it sideways off of, off of our concern as a town, because nobody's had any chance to think about anything else that we could do with it. My problem with that is that there are, there are large groups of people that are underserved in the community, veterans and people in recovery from drug and alcohol. And there's like, there's all kinds of organizations nationally and statewide helping on those issues, but the Town of Berlin isn't doing anything for those people. We're going to sideways move this owned building off to private use, when we haven't even looked at other things that we could do with it. So I appreciate what you've done, but I don't support it at all. I'm sorry. I think that we could look at other things first. Not that it's a bad idea, but I mean, making a private building without even thinking about other needs, other people that need a space. Thanks.
Kay Scoog, 24 Village Lane. What I'm hearing is, if we sell this and somebody else, veteran, can use it, it costs us essentially nothing. And if we keep it, it costs us, well, we probably really won't repair it for $213. I approve of selling it now, one of two-thirds vote, and then letting Habitat for Humanity provide a good place for a veteran, which is doing exactly what Breanna was saying.
Peter Hoffman, Randall Road. I guess I'm confused. Why are we not outright selling it? And costing the taxpayer nothing, and taking on the taxes that accrue?
I'm the chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. This was brought to us. We have been looking for a property to do this with. We've brought it in front of town meeting, discussing that we were looking for something to do with this. As the Affordable Housing Trust, we're going to look at affordable housing projects. As far as selling it, I think that would be really difficult for a variety of reasons. One is it's a really small lot. It does not conform to Berlin's standards for small lots. You're, also, if we're going to put the historic restriction on it, a lot of people are going to shy away from that historic restriction. It's also really small. So I think, you know, as the chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, as the organization in town that's been told- in town that's been told by town meeting to find us affordable housing opportunities, that's what we've done.
Yeah, I'll call you.
I'm going to take her and I'll call you.
Thank you. Julie Lee, 180 South Street. I appreciate the work, Lisa. I know how hard it is. I would agree too. If we don't have a senior center in town and we don't have a rec building in town, I think we can use that space for, one of those two things for our residents first. Thank you.
I ask to move the question?
We have a motion to the question. We did have others that wanted to speak. The motion to the question would eliminate their chance to speak. If you are in favor, if you, we will take, it's a two-thirds vote and we will take this by electronic. This is a vote to stop debate. A yes vote stops debate. A no vote continues debate. Electronic vote now. Are you ready? See, we have to program this for an extra vote when we do this, so just takes a second Looks like we're there. Okay, I'll close the vote. Ninety-seven yes, thirty-seven no, and thirty-seven no. And what's the, what's the percentage on this? Looks like it's 20. Seventy-two percent in favor, which is more than the required two-thirds majority. Okay, so we go back to the original vote. The motion is to transfer the Legion Hall to the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust and it requires, it requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, are you ready? All those in favor vote yes. Got the same number? That's the same number, isn't it? Okay, we'll close the voting and we'll get the results. Eighty yes, fifty-five no, and the percentage, 59% yes, which is less than the required 66 and two-thirds. So the motion fails. Is it 11 o'clock yet? It is 11:08. And that means if we have a, if we have a vote at this time as to whether to continue or to go home. We have Articles 21 through 24 to do, although Article 24 is the election, so it's Articles 21 through 23. They are, however, are long bylaw things. So your decision at this point is, do we continue or do we not? those in favor of continuing, please say aye. Those opposed to continuing, please say no. The ayes have it. We only have three articles. The question is, can we manage to not debate them for a long time? Peg?
All right, we'll go quick. On the earth removal bylaw, I move the town vote to repeal the Berlin general bylaw, Article 22 and 24, and replace these bylaws with a new Article, oh, it's 12. Never mind, I can't do math. 12 and 14 to replace with 12 to address earth removal and importation as written in warrant, Article 21.
Thank you. And the motion is the same as it is in the warrant, Peg?
There's a lot in here and I hope that you all had the opportunity to read it, but what this does is that we had an earthworks board and unfortunately, they disbanded multiple years ago. We had two bylaws that were in conflict with each other, so we have trashed those and we have come up with this one. This one is a lot tighter than the other one. It has limitations on how much soil or loam, sand and gravel can be brought in. That's about 500 cubic yards. For those wondering, a pickup truck holds about two cubic yards, so you've got 300 trucks. It talks about permits that need to be required. It talks about new fees. It also talks about bonds that will be required, that if somebody's bringing dirt or soil in, that they need to pay the money, pay some money to the town. So if there are any litigation issues, then we have that money to use. The gravel or the, the soil that can be brought in, it can't be junk. It needs to be free of materials, clay, seashells, asphalt, glass, solid waste, concrete, rebar. It must be light-kind soil. There needs to be applications. It also talks about a local transportation plan, that there needs to be specific times and the amounts that will go up and down the roads in Berlin. The nice thing about this is that a permit can be denied if somebody does not follow the rules. Unfortunately, this only impacts projects going forward. It does nothing for anything that is currently going on in town.
Is there, is there, are there others that wish to speak to this? I just look at three pages of bylaw and say, you've got to be kidding me for whatever Okay, this is, this is done by the Select Board. The Select Board has functioned in most of the roles that are involved with this, so there's no other board that's involved in, in this particular bylaw in terms of its use in general, unless somebody else wants to comment. If nobody else wants to talk, then we can go and we're voting to change some previous bylaws in Articles 12 and 19, and we're changing them to a new Article 12, which includes all of two or three previous bylaws. Anything else to be said on the motion? If not, it's a bylaw and I feel like we ought to use our electronic vote, so we make sure we have a recorded vote on it. And I will ask you to start voting now if you want to make the change, yes or no? Okay, eighty-eight yes, seventeen no. The motion carries in the affirmative.
Jay Teach, Planning Board. Article 22. I move the town vote to add to the zoning bylaw new Section 500, Protected Use Accessory Dwelling Units to Article 5 supplemental regulations and modify Section 340 table of accessory
As described in Article 5, Article 22?
Yes.
Put those words on it. So the motion is to add the zone, to the zoning bylaws, a new Section 500, Protected Use Accessory Dwelling Units to Article 5 supplemental relation, regulations, and to modify Section 340 table of accessory use relations, regulations as described in Article 22. Yes, Jay?
Got it. Okay, the Planning Board held a public hearing on April 22nd this year. Sorry. To consider comments concerning Article 22 in the town meeting warrant to be held on May 5th at the Planning Board meeting also held on Tuesday, April 22nd, the Planning Board voted for in favor, zero opposed to Article 22.
And that's the Planning Board's report in regard to their support of this article, which is required by state law.
Okay. So in November of last year, Governor Maura Healey wrote a surprise couple paragraphs for us in the middle of a, I don't know, 100-page bond bill that said it requires that as of February 5th this year, in every city and town in Massachusetts, in every zone where single-family homes are allowed, so that's almost every property in our town, on every building lot, even if it's not conforming to our zoning for area and street frontage, an owner may build what's called a Protected Use Accessory Dwelling Unit. We call it a PADU, okay? So a PADU is a structure that has sleeping, cooking and sanitary facilities. It can be attached to a existing primary home, so it can be inside the home or outside, but attached with a shared wall. It could be a separate building, like you have a barn, you could put an apartment in there, or it could be a completely independent building, like a tiny home, okay? It can be a maximum of half the size of the primary home on the property and no more than 900 square feet. It has to have a separate entrance. One thing that we are allowed to impose on this, there's very few things that we can control in this. One is the setback. So we require that a house be set back 50 feet from the front lot line, 40 from the back and 20 on the sides. We can require that. The ADU must have a separate, must have a driveway. Must be able to get at least one car in, and it could be a shared driveway or a separate one. That's allowed. It has to be built to code and it has to have a standard building permit and inspections and a certificate of occupancy before you can rent it. The water and sewer have to comply with Title V and the Board of Health regulations. You can share a septic system or have a separate one. There's allowed one per lot of these protected ADUs, but we already on our bylaw have a standard ADU, which has got a bunch of requirements. You need to have a family member, caregiver or an employee living there. You need to get a permit every five years, a lot of other requirements. So you could have also a larger ADU that met all these requirements, but I don't think anyone's built one in the town of Berlin ever, so that's not something to worry about. Short-term rentals, you know, are not allowed, so nobody can use this to do an Airbnb currently unless we change the laws in the future. So what we're, we're looking for in the vote today is the state has this set of requirements, but we're supposed to come up with our, a modification to our bylaw that allows what they have required that we allow. And that's what you see written in the warrant, is our write-up basically matching. From, from November, when we got the surprise, until February 5th, there were a whole series of questions that got answered. You can imagine, there's hundreds of years going into the zoning that we have now and all of a sudden, we need to allow these Protected Use ADUs, so there's a ton of questions about the details of that. And some of those have gotten answered and some of them haven't, and will probably get answered over the next couple of years as people start building them. But that's where we are. We need a vote from you to allow the addition of, we just made this new section of 500 that will go into our existing zoning bylaw and make us comply with the state requirements. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there others that wish to speak?
Thank you, Mike Topman, Debbie Rhodes. I just, generally, I would be in favor of ADUs being in real estate, owning rental properties and whatnot, but have you done any studies about the impact this would have on the school district if additional apartments are built on every single-family lot with how many students might come in, as we just had a little contentious discussion about the budget? We know for a fact now, even without this, I think the projections for student growth in our schools are somewhere around 40% in Berlin, so have you looked into that at all? And how will that impact us?
Jay?
So it's interesting trying to predict how many of these will get built in this town, right? One thing I looked at is this exact same thing was enacted in 2016 in California, and I've seen numbers ranging from 40,000 to 80,000 permits that were requested. I'm guessing that about half of those were existing illegal apartments that people wanted to make legal for good reasons, and maybe half of them were actually new. So say it's 40,000. I think there's, I can't remember, I think it's like 3 million housing units. When I figured it out, from 2016 to today, about 0.4% of the current homes in California were built. A number of ADUs were built that was equal to 0.4% of the number of houses. And I'm guessing that this is going to be a pretty small number, maybe single digits per year. It'd be interesting to see because a lot of people move here for privacy and are they going to want to have an ADU with some other person living there? You just have to kind of estimate what's going to happen. But I, I really doubt that it's going to be a number large enough to have a significant impact on the schools. For one thing, they can only be half the size of the primary house or 900 square feet, so I doubt they're going to be, it's probably going to be a lot of one bedrooms and maybe two bedrooms, probably not much more. But I can't, you know, I don't know the real answer.
Hi, Sue Roberts, Central Street. Just a quick question. If it gets voted down, it only means that the state definitions will apply. If we approve it, we get to decide what the definitions are. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Yeah, this is... This is a requirement. Every city in town has to allow this, so, um, I'm not really sure what happens if we don't have a bylaw that allows it. I presume that we're just going to have to... The building inspector is going to have to allow people to build these, even though it doesn't comply with our zoning. And the leeway we have so far is very, very limited. The difference between what we got from the state and what we've written here is miniscule. You know, I think over time, there's so many questions in the details, I think it's going to evolve, and maybe we're going to have a little more flexibility, and we may want to amend this, you know, in another year or two. But really, um, yeah, not... Voting in... A no vote is not going to make a lot of difference. It's kind of odd that this is, uh... You know, in such a short time, such a big change to our zoning has been forced upon us, but it has been. And I think the state is going to be watching to seeing that we're complying with this and that we're allowing it.
If you want an indication of how much the state wants this, take a look at the thing where it says "majority vote," because zoning bylaw things normally require a two-thirds majority. But the simple majority is here because the state changed it for this particular provision to encourage the towns to do it. We will... This is a zoning bylaw, and therefore, we need a recorded vote on it anyway. So I will ask you to... If you're ready, I will ask you to vote on the motion for a protected accessory dwelling unit bylaw. Yes or no? I will close the voting, and we'll get the results. Eighty-seven, yes. And ten, no. The motion carries in the affirmative. And we have Article twenty-three, floodplain bylaw. Tim Wheeler, the Planning Board.
Tim Wheeler, 232 Pleasant Street. I'm on the Planning Board. I move the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting the current Section 410 floodplain district and replacing it with a new Section 410 as described in Article twenty-three.
There's a slight change in this motion, so I'm going to read it. I move to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting the current Section 410 floodplain district and replacing it with a new Section 410 as written in the warrant... Uh, excuse me, as described in Article twenty-three. Mr. Wheeler?
The Berlin... Excuse me. The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April twenty-second, 2025, to consider comments concerning Article twenty-three on the annual town meeting warrant to be held on May fifth, 2025. At the Planning Board meeting also held on Tuesday, April twenty-second, 2025, the Planning Board voted for in favor, zero opposed to Article twenty-three. Um, this is similar in some ways to what we dealt with with the preceding article. The federal government and the state government create floodplain guidance, and in order to be in compliance with those, we determined that we needed to eliminate the current overlay district that represents the floodplain and add this new language that was generated mostly by the state of Massachusetts. We worked with a number of agencies, and one particular individual who was very helpful. The purpose is, you know, ensure public safety, eliminate new hazards, prevent the occurrence of public emergencies, avoid the loss of utility services, eliminate costs associated with response and cleanup, reduce damage to public and private property. We've had a floodplain overlay district for as long as I've been on the Planning Board, which is a while. And it makes sense for us to bring it up to date and make the modifications as recommended by the feds and the state, and that's what we've tried to do with this. We've embedded the definitions in this section, because in some cases, the definitions that we have in our zoning bylaw don't always agree with the language that is embedded in this new bylaw. And our hope is that we will rewrite the zoning bylaw in its entirety, so, forewarning, you have a great deal to look forward to at a town meeting in the future, when we will vote on the entirety of the zoning bylaw in one night. So, uh... But this won't have to be modified too much if we vote on it tonight and you approve it, so thank you.
I remember the last time we had to do that. You ready for this? Only about forty people showed up for half of the meeting, and they voted the don't-do zoning bylaw. Pete?
Pete Mosher, Brigham Road. The current Section 410 lists specific parcels that are in the overlay district, and this new, um, bylaw refers to areas that are identified in two reports, one from the Worcester County flood insurance rate map and one from FEMA, but both of those are due to come out on July eighth, 2025. So they're not here yet, but we're voting to accept those definitions, so I don't know if I'm going to be in a floodplain or not. And so I'm curious about that.
The wonderful thing about Berlin is that, because we're very intelligent, evidently, there... To my knowledge, there's only one structure that's in the floodplain district currently, maybe a couple others, but they... Chances that... The odds are that there's not going to be any modification to the number of units that are in the floodplain. The floodplain maps are going to remain fairly consistent to the way they've been. Does... Do you think you're in the floodplain for some...
If you're listening, no.
No, no, no.
No, I'm just wondering if it's premature to do this now, rather than waiting for the new reports that are due.
Well, the feds have said to us, "Do this now." The Attorney General won't approve this for some time in the future anyway, so this won't become effective in Berlin until after the July date. And these maps are those that are being generated and the ones that we have to comply with, so we're... It's sort of out of our hands.
Someone else? Yes? No? Somebody's gesticulating, but it's apparently not about this. Okay, then we'll move on to a vote. This is a two-thirds vote, because we're amending the zoning bylaw, and we will do it electronically, so we have a recorded vote in that regard. Those in favor of the new... Putting in the revised, uh, Section 410, vote yes, and those opposed to it, vote no. I guess we're there. I'll close the voting. Seventy-five, yes. Nine, no. We'll get the percent, but I know it's passed. Eighty-nine... Eighty-nine point twenty-nine percent in favor. So that motion passes with the two-thirds vote. Scott, Article twenty-four?
Article twenty-four. I move to adjourn this meeting to Monday, May twelfth, at noon at the Berlin Town Office's 23 Linden Street, Lower Level, at which time and place the polls will be open for the election of town officers and to act under quest... To act on the questions under the Articles, uh, twenty-four and that follows the announcement of the results of the elections, do they have this meeting dissolved?
Motion is made and seconded. It's in the same form that it's in your warrant. Anything to be said on it? This is a... Includes a motion to adjourn, so therefore, it's not debatable. I will say this, if you'll help. Brown chairs can go against that wall. White chairs can go against that wall. And leave the rest of them where they are, because we've got a lot of stuff to sort out and send back to the right places. All those in favor, say aye? Opposed, no? Meeting adjourned, unanimous vote.